Tried to ride it to select board meetings and stuff. Usually, somebody just ends up saying, "Just bring it inside, Allison." It's just too much because on the sidewalk, that is kind of inconsiderate.
That's a good point.
We could just get rid of one of the employee parking spots and then put a bike rack there. Somewhere.
Why Dave and I can maybe look at it?
Yeah. Maybe right where the crosswalk is gonna go. Just kidding. I love the trash can out there, though.
Yeah.
It's really well positioned.
Bike rack.
Oh, he says, Mark texted, said he was on his way at 10:56 and said around 10 minutes late. Let's just give a couple of minutes. So we don't have to repeat anything. We can juggle apples, Jenna.
Yeah, if anyone was like an apple.
June ballot, but it's closer than you think. With that, I'll turn it over to our town folk and start the conversation.
So when we were kind of going through the list of some of the outstanding issues that we talked about for the June ballot, we wanted to be pretty careful about what we were biting off this time, just because when we went through this exercise about a year ago, I think it was about a year ago.
This spring, early this year.
Yeah. We ended up with quite a long list, and that sort of diverted a lot of attention to ordinance development. So yeah, we're hoping to kind of pare things down to make it a little bit more manageable this year so that Jeremy's time is kind of not just spent on ordinance work.
Cool. Jeremy, you want to take it from there?
I'm sure nobody will have any trouble.
100% lockstep agreement.
No.
So Jeremy, you want to lead us into your...
Clearly her favorite.
That's why we delayed for a few minutes. Well, I told them.
Yeah, she does.
Better tale.
She's a sweetheart.
All right. So what I did is you have a little memo that I drafted, and over the last couple of years since I've been here, I've got kind of an ongoing list going of zoning ordinance amendments or tweaks that I think should happen, and I'm trying to prioritize those. And what I did was I came up with my priority one list, that would be for June of this year, and a couple of them are administrative.
Can you talk to a little bit about what Audra mentioned, and that is lessons learned about what the stuff we did earlier here caused some issues?
You know, last June, we had quite a ballot that people voted on, and at that time, it took a considerable amount of my time working on those, and well over half, half my time was spent on just ordinance amendments. And a lot of, when I do that, other things slide. You know, I've got Tannery to work on, Sagamore Farm to work on, DOT projects, the landing, a whole host of things that need to, that are planning and economic, community development related. So what we're trying, I'm trying to do is pare that down and try to be as focused as we can on ones that I think are reasonable and relatively easy to do, and some that address some priorities in town. And I know I've been hearing about housing affordability and housing options every, almost every week since I've been here. So what I did was I tried to come up with a couple, and I've got three in here that, and I just don't want to continue with Bob. What Bob was asking me to go, I don't want to get bogged down, and I can't get bogged down, and just working on ordinances. You know, again, I've got a lot of work to do, and I spent over half my time last, for many months, working on ordinance amendments. So what I was proposing to look at was, came up with a priority list. I've got a much larger list, but again, you gotta kind of figure out what you can actually pull off in a lot of time and what's reasonable for the town. Housing is important, and so what I thought of doing was looking at accessory apartments, which are allowed, again, in a handful of zones, but not in all the residential zones. And what I'd like to do is try to open them up to allow them in RU1, RU2, and the CR. And then also tweak the definition of what an accessory apartment is. Right now, it says that a property owner has to live in the primary use building or the primary dwelling unit, and they can't live in the accessory dwelling. And I've heard from a handful of folks, older folks, that want to stay in their home. They want to stay on their property. They love Camden. They'd love to do an accessory dwelling unit and live in that one and rent out the main house. Right now, ordinance prohibits that and doesn't allow that.
I like that flexibility a lot.
There's no reason why that would be...
That's a good observation.
I think we're all in favor of that.
Good. And then, if you recall, there was a gentleman who lives over by the Colkert Avenue property that's going to be subdivided, and he had concerns. He wanted to, he was making a proposal to rezone the industry zone to Village.
It'd bust the village.
It does bust the village, and I clearly had issues with that. You know, we need to maintain some commercial property in town, and if it all becomes Village, we're gonna be a residential town only. And so we did talk to the planning board about that specific issue. All the planning board members, members had concerns about that as well. The planning board threw out this business opportunity zone that we have that does allow mixed residential and commercial as an option. It doesn't mean all of a sudden it's mandatory that that's what will happen there because the industry zone still has its uses. It's just, it's another overlay that someone can use on that property. And that's why I included that, because that does provide, could provide more residential housing in town. And then, again, for housing, was looking at minimum lot sizes for multifamily in the Village District. I've been approached by someone who has multifamily up in this area, actually. I think everyone probably knows.
In the Village District.
In the Village District, and it's all multifamily right now. And he'd love to be able to add another one or two buildings of multifamily up there. And right now, the minimum lot size doesn't work for residential, and I haven't at all looked at how to make that one work, but it could be, you know, could be doable.
Can I devil's advocate on that? Why were the minimum lot sizes set in the first place? And, you know, I'd like to know why they were set before I go, oh, let's just change it without knowing background.
Agreed, and I got to do some homework on that, Mark. I understand that.
Obviously, that's a good question. We're gonna have a lot of questions on these as we go through implementation.
And that would be, you know, that's the supporting information that I'd dive into in order to bring anything.
Good question.
Well, I doubt we're gonna uncover any like diamonds in the basic reasons that this type of, that minimum lot sizes are made larger than what the state requires that they be. What would you say those reasons normally are in general?
Well, in general, when the state regulates minimum lot size, it has to do with onsite wastewater disposal. And so the state allows you go down to like 20,000 square feet. We have an acre or 40,000 in town.
Usually why towns do it, there's like a suburban character thing that...
More space.
That's what... Right. And I guess, you know, if your goal is to, you know, add housing stock within your community, then you would generally reduce the lot sizes to facilitate that. So I guess that's the public policy question, is do we want more housing in the Village District? And if so, are we going to allow for smaller lots to facilitate that? And it's always, you know, a kind of a needle that needs to be threaded between the character of the neighborhood and allowing for more housing. And, you know, that's what Jeremy would dive into.
And in this instance, I mean, what I was specifically looking at, I mean, I want to look at it broadly, but in this area up by Colkert Avenue in Virginia where there's existing multifamily, like built out as multifamily, it's not a single-family neighborhood in this area that I was specifically looking at.
Oh, you're talking about Colkert? I thought you were talking about general.
I am talking about general, but the gentleman who owns some multifamily up in there is clearly multifamily development. There's no single family anywhere near.
We're talking about Section 8 multifamily that he has?
There is some there, but it's, most of it's market rate according to the owner.
The one question, and the one thing I've been thinking about, and it was, there's another, something that came before us, I thought about that, is the one thing I get concerned about is when one person comes to us with something to increase their specific situation, that we not just get so single-focused on, oh, yeah, that's a good idea, but look at the whole town and, because then we start to set a precedent. If somebody comes to us and say, hey, I want to do this, I want to do that, I worry about that.
I get that.
For example, I think I can guess who's talking to you.
Because it seems like some of these things just would hold up all on their own as things to do proactively. It almost surprises me to hear you say that it's sort of like a result.
What I was trying to say was that there are people in town that have, are advocating and have asked me about these things. And I have been looking at, starting to look at minimum lot size in the Village District anyways, multifamily. I'm just trying to throw out that there are people that are advocating for something that I may agree with.
Can, is there a connection between the industry zone bullet point and the Colkert? Because when you, I thought that was totally different, but then when you're saying Colkert Avenue.
Yes. So, no, there is no connection other than proximity to each other. So the multifamily that I was looking at, that I was talking about, that a gentleman has multifamily over there, he would like to add a couple, at least a couple more buildings onto a very large site already. That's just in the neighborhood of the industry.
It's not Colkert.
It's not.
It's in the neighborhood. It's not in the industrial zone.
Yeah, it's in the V.
It's in the Village Zone.
So there's no, okay. Now, we're talking about the Section 8 housing? So is there also, for the multifamily units, is the minimum lot size, like say to convert a big old house in like up on, you know, Pearl, right, is that a one acre minimum lot size also?
Oh, no.
What is the one acre part?
I was referring to, when you talked about state minimum lot size requirements, that has to do with subsurface wastewater disposal system. So that's where I said about the 40,000 square feet, because we have a 20,000, or the state has 20,000 square feet, we say 40,000 on subsurface.
Which is almost an acre.
Almost an acre.
Okay. So, but, so I guess my question is still the same. So is the minimum lot size for a multi, for any multifamily dwelling, is that almost an acre?
In the Village Zone, it's 7,500 square feet on the sewer.
Per dwelling?
Per dwelling unit.
Per dwelling unit. How much is 7,500 square feet?
43,560 is an acre.
44,4 is an acre, 42, 43,560 is an acre. So seven, that is about one quarter, not quarter, less than a quarter, 20% of an acre.
So what are you saying, when you say our minimum lot size is almost an acre?
It's a, it's a 40,000 square feet if you're wanting, need to build on a septic system.
Oh, if you need to build in a septic system. Okay.
State law allows you, under some surface wastewater rules, to go down to 20,000.
20,000 square feet.
We're at 40,000.
So we would never be able to reduce to less than 20,000?
No.
Well, septic is a whole different situation.
Only if you're in septic, and that's a whole different can of worms. I mean, that's something I think that requires a lot of thought about.
Hold on. I guess I'm still confused about what you're proposing. Is there something that can be done to, how difficult is it in Camden right now to turn a large family home on, you know, just to say, in the Village District?
Bayview.
Sure, on Bayview, that's, you know, a quarter of an acre or a third of an acre, just kind of your typical big house that might be, if you want to turn that into a multifamily.
You need 7,500 square feet per dwelling unit to pull that off. So the general minimum lot size in those neighborhoods, like on Pearl Street, it's like 10,000 square feet generally.
So you can get one.
So you get one.
Period.
Okay.
Now, keep in mind, you're also allowed the accessory unit, right? That's separate. We don't think about lot size when we talk about the accessory units in our zoning ordinance, the small ones.
So basically, right now, you can't do what Allison is suggesting.
Unless you have 7,500 square feet.
So say, let's think about what would be a reasonable, maybe a four unit, three to four units, for some of these.
You need a 3,000 square feet lot.
For a four unit.
So you'd need...
Almost an acre.
Almost an acre.
Now, keep in mind, there are building code issues that come up once you start getting, if you're going to turn something into a three unit, then you need to sprinkle the whole building. So that's just another separate issue.
Like 2,500 staircases and all that stuff.
Exactly. It's not that, it's not that simple to do.
But in Rockland, you see all these big houses that are turned into...
Multi?
Yeah, and you saw the same thing in Bangor, and a lot of times, those were done well prior to zoning and well prior to the building codes. That would really make it challenging for someone to do that.
Especially a sprinkler part.
And how is it impacted by not being on septic? Like, a lot of these lots that we're talking about, these big, on being on town sewer, yeah. Like, I lived, I've just sort of mounted, but I think every apartment I've ever lived in in Camden, I mean, is, would be elite, I mean, against the ordinance by this lot size, but they're all on town sewer.
Yeah, usually if they're on town sewer, you need less.
Right, you need much less. 7,500 per dwelling unit.
Right. So that's, I guess I'm confused.
Aren't there three dwelling units on the Pearl Street property that...
Four.
But you're probably the same situation. They were divided before.
Right.
That's a possibility right now.
So Jeremy, just to...
On High Street, another place I lived.
Bring it back to the, what are you, what items would you propose, proposing potentially to change in terms of?
I have not gone, I have not jumped into that one deep enough.
Okay, all right.
He's just saying he would look at it and come back with a...
I mean, this list, I will tell you, I've got, like, the language, well, for accessory apartments, that language for me is already done to make that work and the changes there. That's already done. The industry zone, if you want me to pursue that, that language is for the most part done.
Now, why is that done? Because it's...
Well, just because it's relatively easy.
There's a template out there that's...
It's boilerplate, it's easy. It's like replace, add I, industry zone into the BOSS. I mean, it's straight, it's pretty straightforward.
I don't feel good about that yet.
I guess the question...
Do we want to go, do we want to save comments for the end, or do you want to...
Yeah, let's try to summarize the thing, then we can come back.
And then, let me, maybe continue on the, the first one on my list there is the BTR, rezone that to B1. And I don't have a map right in front of me, but BTR is where Knox Mill is, the Knox Mill parking lots, go up to Knowlton Street, and then even the wastewater treatment plant, and all that's BTR. For the most part, the uses are nearly identical except the BTR, which is the business transition zone, allows outdoor storage of boats. No one is storing boats in the BTR that I can see. I've looked at all the lots in the BTR. There's not many. They may want to in the future. I mean, I think it's important to, when you look at this, that's fine. But we're talking Knox Mills primarily, the wastewater treatment plant, and then, again, the, what is the concrete housing going up the road?
Bell Point?
Bell Point. And then you have the other buildings that were built out by MBNA right on Mechanic Street. That's for the most part, all that's BTR in town. And the development standards are exactly the same. So when you took, talk about ground coverage and setbacks and all that's exactly the same as the B1. And again, the uses are nearly identical except the BTR requires 1,500 square feet per dwelling unit for lot size. And that is...
As opposed to?
In the B1, there is no minimum lot size for a dwelling unit in the B1 at all.
How does that work? You don't have, there doesn't have to be a minimum lot size for a dwelling unit?
Because the idea is you have a dense downtown.
Built up side, there are no setbacks. For the most part, buildings are built, lot line to lot line, built out. It's like all of our downtown is B1. So if someone wants to add residential, take up office space upstairs and put residential, they could do that, and they wouldn't need additional lot size.
What about parking requirements?
And remember, we did tweak parking a little bit the last time. So this BTR piece that's challenging for us right now is the Knox Mill parking lot and the parking lot across the street. Well, we cannot move forward with the purchase from Matt Orin on that parking lot until we tweak either going down this road or we amend the minimum lot size. And so the planning board and I chatted about this, and they looked at the lots, the uses that were allowed, they looked at the development standards that were allowed, and they said, because I was proposing just to tweak the minimum lot size in BTR, and they said, why do we even have the BTR anymore? It was a transition business zone at the time. It's no longer transitioning to anything. It is, for the most part, part of downtown. And I look, again, looked at the uses and the lot, and the development standards, bulk and space density standards, and they're all the same except for that residential piece.
Do you know when that was established the first time?
Really hard to find in Camden, and I'm doing my best to figure out BTR.
Digitized, just everything being digitized. It's all, I'll just save it for another time.
And then there was, and then the other couple that I had wanted to bring forward was, and we beat this one around a fair amount last year, was the erosion segmentation control piece. I think with a couple of tweaks, that one's just ready to go back. And then there are some, like another administrative piece that would make our, we don't have a good provision in our code for when someone wants to modify their site plan after it's been approved. There's really not a lot of, there's no definition on what a minor amendment is. There's no definition what a field adjustment is. And I had drafted one pretty simple, and I taught, ran that by the planning board. They loved it. They're, they've been frustrated by how that, how it currently reads. The code officers frustrated by how it reads. We have a hard time giving direction to an applicant on what they need to submit to us in terms of when they want to, either, you know, a sidewalk was approved in this location, and then now as they're building it out, or they decide, you know, it's probably best suited over in this location, or if someone wants to add a front portico or an entryway onto a building, how do you treat that? And so we've came up with a good fix for that, and that's an easy one. And I would recommend that that's a priority that we just do and get done. And those are my priorities. And then, you know, my priority two list, if, if we have the time, again, I think some of these are, should be straightforward. I know sometimes they're not always straightforward.
Do you think?
But there's a couple that are committee or work group related that I think we should move, move on, at least try to get to for June. The Historic Resource Committee has spent a lot, a lot of time on the demolition delay piece, and, you know, they drafted, you know, a version, they've been to you guys before, they've been to the planning board a couple of times, and every time we say, we'll be working on it, we'll get to it. And I just frankly, I mean, they've devoted a lot of time, a lot of energy, and sometimes, in my opinion, it's best to try to move them along and see what the people vote. And if people vote yea or nay, then they do.
When's the last time we...
Something like a demolition delay ordinance, I think the longer it gets delayed, the less it's accompli, I mean, the less it's accomplishing, the more buildings are knocked down. If the voters would like to be preserving these historic homes, as personally I hope they will, then let them let us know before we lose any more of them.
Next one.
I'll tell you, do you want to say something?
Basically what I was gonna say.
Yeah, so just, I think where you were going, Taylor, was, as I recall, the Historic Resource Committee, Pat Saling, they all came to you this summer sometime, did like their little...
Work plan update.
Work plan update. But I think we did, and I think it was said that we weren't going to have time to do it this year and that we were going to move it, try to get it...
When they talked about their work plan, I think they brought it up.
Okay. Has, has an ordinance ever been brought to the select board in the past?
Yeah.
No, not to the board. I don't think it's been drafted.
It's been drafted.
I mean, it's been, yeah, support has been expressed for it.
Yes.
Quite a bit. It's been...
But it's never been to the board.
We voted by...
It was a version that you guys had.
We voted actually to support the concept.
Yeah, that's correct.
And there was a...
I think it's more just the detail of what's in it.
How it works, how it works. That was what caused the delay, because we hadn't got to that point. And similarly, last year, as I recall, we put it on the shelf with many because of Jeremy's point. We're not going to overload the system. Let's finish up your last two, then we can have an overall discussion.
And then, you know, the inland harbor mooring issue was front and center for a group a little bit ago, you know, about a year ago.
A year ago today.
Is it a year ago today?
Really?
Okay. And I know Taylor's been very involved in that, and that group's been working on something. And again, I think if we decide we want to move forward, and we do, I would suspect you'd have something within the next month or so from that group or some guidance on an ordinance. And I just think when a group spends a year time being directed to look into an issue, and if that group decides we should bring an ordinance forward to the board, then, you know, then we do. And then you guys either vote yea or nay on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like that can be kind of Taylor's, leaving that chart, if you feel like there's something ready to, if it comes to us in time, then it'll come to, you know.
I think they're close.
We came to a bit of a head at the end of the, at the end of the summer, and I think definitely accomplished a lot in terms of people coming to consensus. But I think ultimately, you know, it's going to come down to the board, the working group voting on, on...
Recommendations.
Support. But we have a pretty good framework right now. We sat down again last week with Paul Lieber, who's the chairman, and I think we have a good direction. So the benefit of this that Jeremy pointed out is that we don't, it's not, doesn't involve the planning board, so it's fairly straight, fairly straightforward in terms of the time that it takes to do that.
That's a positive comment.
We all know where you were going with that.
Be very clear.
And then, and then the other one, the other one that's on the priority list is marijuana, cannabis. Now, remember, we did cultivation, tiers of, allowed different tiers of cultivation?
That's done.
That's done. I do hear from folks, and I know, I appreciate, Mark, what you say, do we do things because people are coming in? And oftentimes, I mean, that's how we operate, frankly. I mean, people, you know, we don't know all the issues people are facing every, you know, from a business perspective, until people knock on the door and say, hey, I'd like to do this, but I can't do this. Is there a way to do it? And then that's when I bring things to you.
I just get concerned if it becomes too specific.
Yeah. I mean, I wouldn't bring you something that was completely off the wall.
I think it's called a knee-jerk reaction.
Yeah.
Well, it's because we also, it's felt like we've all, we've all said that housing, based on not conversations with individuals who want to do something, but with just generally knowing the community, there's like at least, you know, one small reason why we've all been elected is that we have some sort of a sense of the community, we hope. And so we'd all said that, and to feel like, okay, well, now it's, nothing happens, but then something comes forward if, you know, an individual developer wants to do something, then all of a sudden we, like, that's the reason for doing it, rather than the general comments that we get from...
Yeah.
I mean, that's true. That said, if someone comes in and knocks on the door tomorrow that says, hey, I got this great idea for Sagamore Farm property, and it doesn't work with our zoning ordinance, I mean, I'm going to sit down and talk with them and entertain it.
Oh, definitely.
I mean, we got to do those.
I'm just playing devil's advocate.
Are you, so these, if I count right, six, six priority ones are focus, focus, and the priority two, time availability comes to be, you're recommending these three potentials. So comes to us, select board, to the types. What we feel is the, those priorities are not, and then if something's missing, fine, but also maintaining the framework in which we're working. Because we all know, I think all five know, that last year, it was like late last year, we fundamentally, I believe myself, included made a mistake. We had 12 ordinances that Jerry brought to us, and we said, yeah, all 12 look good. I'm exaggerating and making a point. We attacked a lot, and I think...
You're right. That list, I remember having that list while I was standing up there, and I'm going through it, and then all of a sudden, it was like, they're all priorities.
So let's open it up to select board individual member comments. Taylor? Allison, you want to go first?
I was just gonna ask a clarifying question. So Jeremy, are you suggesting that you're comfortable with everything on this paper prioritizing in two tiers, or do you feel like we need to pare things off of this list?
Thank you. That's a good question. I think all of priority... Thank you. That's a good question. I think all of priority one is doable with the exception, depending on what has to get involved on the minimum lot size for multifamily. I mean, that may require a much broader discussion with, you know, neighborhoods and, and the community.
Sure.
And it may take a little longer than.
Not a zero, it's not a priority, but it's not going to be a quick process.
Right. Right. On the, on the housing side, I mean, there are things, you know, Belfast, you know, to tackle housing issue there, they started allowing accessory apartments. I'm not sure it really helped there yet, but I know people actively use accessory, have accessory apartments in Camden, lots of them.
Yeah.
And I think that would be a big plus to add this in town in all these zones. So.
I'm having a hard time thinking of a downside to doing that. Why was it there in the first place?
Dream about parking. If that's what will happen, is that other neighbors.
That's, yeah.
And, and I don't believe that we should cave to that. People will always, who have, you know, already their current situation is fine in a neighborhood, they will very often protest other people, additional people being able to move into the neighborhood and it'll be about parking, I think.
Just to summarize something like your, I agree with you about the parking.
I don't think that's.
We're always gonna get some first.
We may have to allow street parking in the, during plowing season a little bit more leniently.
We may have to be more flexible. I think Allison has a really good point. And yeah.
Any other comments on the list, Taylor? Were you missing something from your perspective?
Which ones?
Select board consider.
Nope.
Anybody else next? Allison, you're next.
But I reserve the right to change my mind.
You have the right.
Okay. Starting with things that I think might not be on the list. And also, I, well, I guess to start even before that, a more general comment about things that go on the ballot and whether, you know, your time basically, and if there are opportunities, sometimes for, a lot of the planning board stuff obviously has to go through you, but I think there might be times when you don't, others, somebody else could take the lead, even a non-staff person or like maybe we can identify point people sometimes so that you don't have to do everything. But, because I, I feel like that was a little bit of the problem maybe last time around is that things where we have to seize the opportunities where you don't like food sovereignty, maybe where you don't have to be super involved or knowing that, you know, not everything is going to be perfect or. But the, the main thing that I would really like to see us do is get our comprehensive plan updated to include a mention of climate change and resiliency efforts and even the downtown master plan.
Yeah.
Possibly some are, it kind of.
Do we need an ordinance for that?
Well, you do have to get, you do have to get amendments approved by voters. So, so I will say, and I appreciate the comment, that I did not include that in my list of ordinance amendments. I included that as kind of something that I'm working on as it is. So that's community and planning. That's like broad, big picture planning to me. But you're right, that does need to get to voters. So that is something I have to work on.
And maybe not even, you know, if we can figure out what the division of responsibilities is, a lot of that language is already available in other documents that, you know, some of them you, you may or may not have, even, you know, some of the stuff about the river.
Yeah.
And, and also understanding what, if we could come up with exactly the steps that need to happen. I know for, you know, what's a minor adjustment to your comprehensive plan, what, we don't want to trigger the, that whole thing, but where we have to have the commission and all of that. But what, what could we realistically do? And it does slow us down a lot in terms of applying for grants.
Can we kind of get back to the order stuff and the time availability?
I mean, this is a June ballot. I feel this is a June ballot discussion. We emphasized repeatedly, it was a June ballot discussion. And so if there are sometimes changes to the comprehensive plan have to go through a similarly arduous public hearing process and it's just like an ordinance. So.
But it could be a special town meeting.
It's a good point.
Well, I guess I'm advocating for it being.
Ballot.
That's, I, I, there may actually be a requirement that it go on the ballot.
I don't know.
I'll support going forward for those, those kinds of changes, getting, doing resiliency and, and sea level rise, global warming. It's important. It's the most, the most crucial thing, you know, facing us right now of anything there is.
And our, and our comprehensive plan, even though as a community, we've all sort of affirmed in some way that, that we, not to, that we care about that. And, and, you know, we've done these studies. The, I mean, a lot of it is right in a watershed school reports that can be copied and tasted.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, but if it's, it's relevant to this conversation right now, because sometimes things turn into, there is a big time commitment. And I don't know what the time commitment is in terms of public hearings. And so if it means that something else has to get pushed back because.
Anything else?
I have concerns about the opening of the industrial zone because we don't have much of that left in Camden. We don't have really anywhere where you can build storage units. I'm uncertain whether you can do that in the industrial zone currently in Camden or not. But as soon as we allow anything else there, it just, any kind of residential just kills it for any kind of manufacturing or.
Once you get residential people there, they're gonna all of a sudden complain about any kind of manufacturing situation. Oh, they make too noise.
Right.
Too busy. They got trucks coming in.
They don't mix.
I mean, that's where our transfer station is already.
You've got the transfer station. You've got the backside of ham and lumber, the coastal workshop. We had the, the nice Peak Sierra or what was it? What was it?
Sierra. Before it was Tibbetts. But I guess in the long run, I would, I think it's in the best interest of the community to leave, even if it means that it sits vacant longer, that we should hold out with that area and try for infill, residential infill in other ways.
Good input. Next. You go, you go. Good. I love it.
You're being a little bit.
No, I'm just trying to get it done.
Okay. With the erosion and sedimentation control, is that, how intertwined is that with our, I'm having a little trouble remembering all the things I learned before, with our shoreline zoning? I, I have some general concern, general concerns about our shoreline zoning ordinance. Appears to be the, if you take the state model and also just looking back at some of the history in Camden of when we were originally required to put that into effect, it seems as though we took the, the, the most development friendly approach as possible. It was sort of, the shoreline zoning was seen as a threat to development, a threat to property values. And just looking back at the old articles, it looks like Camden tried to do everything possible to limit the impacts of that on development rather than doing what some, you know, in, in light of sea level rise, especially, you know, along the coast, do we, is there a one foot to three foot kind of consideration or?
On the erosion and sedimentation?
Well, I don't know if there, because I, there's a bunch of stuff in our shoreline zoning ordinance about erosion and sedimentation.
Some stuff, yeah.
And then. I just want to be sure. We're, the towns are allowed to implement things that are more stringent than the state.
Yes. And so the state is the minimum standard, right? And then within that though, there's sometimes there's some negotiation that happens with the state and the municipality based on, generally based on existing development in an area. So if the state minimum says setback of 75 feet is what is warranted in a commercial development district.
Mm-hmm.
That says it's the minimum. That said, if you're in a developed area like we have here along the McGuntuk, where you can't have a 75 foot setback, or you'd have zero buildings downtown or down along the water. So the state does provide for some flexibility and the state has to okay it and find that your proposed changes are generally consistent with the minimum shoreline zoning guidelines.
Got it.
We can go much stricter if you'd like. We can.
Well, I think we need to watch what Allison's talking about and there's the, the other issues that affect erosion, sedimentation.
Well, there are some issues that are, are the states dealing with on a statewide level, comparing flood, the floodplain issues and shoreline zoning where floodplain, you know, says you've got to raise your building X number of feet in order to do any renovations on it. Your finished floor elevation has to be a certain elevation, but then the state shoreline zoning ordinance, model ordinance doesn't allow you to raise your building. So these things conflict with each other. And I know the state, they say they're going to be working on those, trying to balance that out to make sure those take into account that requirement to elevate your building so that everything is one foot above base flood elevation.
Also, the, the way that we look at water dependent uses and I'm.
Wholeheartedly agree.
Definitely concerned that the way that we've interpreted, so when you are rebuilding a structure that is in the shoreline zone and that corresponds with a change of use, especially when it corresponds with a change of use, that the determination of whether there's an adverse impact on all kinds of things, it, I don't know if it's that our ordinance doesn't allow us to take certain things into consideration that the state ordinance does, but I'm just throw it out there, the, the Lyman Morse rebuild of that red shed is really incon, it's really inconsistent with the way that that shed was there to begin with, to be able to have a building over the ocean like that. All of them were slanted toward the, it was a, it was a, they were originally put in there as water dependent uses. And now just a marine use is going to be what? If, if you have a, a marine gift shop, is that a?
Yeah. You're selling some rope.
It's, it's not resident, putting residential in over that. It's, we only have a limited amount of a harbor. So let, you know, just the, as we have more development on the harbor.
Yeah. No, I appreciate it.
We should be reserving.
I think we should have a conversation and try to dive into some of this a little bit.
So maybe does erosion and sedimentation control, could that be part of a larger, could that be held off? Do we have to get that?
We don't have to. That was the erosion and sedimentation control was the one that we had almost all the way through the process. And that was for the most part, taking state law and making it apply so that the town can enforce state law on erosion, sedimentation control that says if you're disturbing soil, you must have erosion control up in place before.
We're giving up the ability with agriculture, the definition.
Right. And you're, you had concerns with agriculture and that was the one issue that I was going to dive into a little bit and bring some.
Mm-hmm.
That's what this was about.
I remember that.
Fix that. The agriculture.
I was gonna work on that and then bring it forward because that's an easy one. But if you want to.
It seems like what's, I don't know how, it could be one of those things that ends up taking more time than.
Possible. What other comments Allison on the list?
I yield the remainder of my time to Jenna and reserve the right to reclaim it should.
Rights. Okay. Ms. Jenna, would you like to go next? Does she volunteer? Do you have any more comments?
I will. I personally also will echo Allison in my concerns about the interpretation of marine uses particularly. And our shoreline zoning ordinance, which I'm far less familiar with than Allison, but what I do know of it, I think that the, the ordinance unto itself could use a look.
Are you talking about the erosion and sedimentation one?
The erosion and sedimentation, if it's going to, I mean, be.
The bigger, you're talking the bigger picture, bigger, bigger issue. Okay.
Right. To the bit, that it could possibly be part of this larger issue instead of piecemealing necessarily everything. I also agree that we need to reserve the industrial zone for industrial use. I am very, very supportive of the accessory apartments. I think from what I'm hearing, that's kind of a soul, a soul. It makes a ton of sense and I'm really glad that you identified that. I'm a little bit on the fence about this BTR thing. I kind of have to take a drive around and give it a little bit of, of thought, just looking at the zone and then looking at the interpretation of the differences. I'm a, a little bit hesitant. I feel like there's a little sort of gut feeling that I have that there could be some kind of nasty unintended consequence that I can't think of right here at the moment. But I would like to take some time to think about that. It's an interesting thing to entertain for sure. And I think it's good that, that it's here. Everything else looks good for me. I would love to see the demolition delay ordinance in priority one tier. I also think that marijuana may need to, I mean, we all have that on the front burner. It's such a moving target. And it's interesting kind of watching what's around. But I also know, you know, if we're responding to, you know, general, general markets and trying to increase all of these business uses and get people in the industrial zone, I guess we have, we've done cultivation, which would, but that talking a little bit about moving forward with that and also seeing the missteps that some of our neighbors are making.
Yeah. Jenna, would you, any specific part, does marijuana has multiple facets?
Oh, yes. Sorry about that.
No, it's not a problem.
I think that for me, it would be, see, I know, my little brother works in this industry. He runs a dispensary, a medical dispensary in Harvard Square in Boston, or they're, they're coming up with one.
Right.
Now, they're all under one roof is this type of, they do a lot of things.
It's medical marijuana.
Medical. But it will be in theory retail once that moves forward. So what I think is, I'm thinking of stores.
Got it.
I think that I, stores, I mean, products manufacturing is, to me, is cultivation. I guess we're talking more about the, the derivative products.
That is what products manufacturing is under state law. Cultivation is growing until you harvest it. And then once you harvest it and you send it out, then it becomes products manufacturing. Yep.
Right. And so for me, it would be about, I think it would, for me, it would be about stores, just as far as what I think is on the forefront of everyone's mind. So I think retail would be an interesting, would be an important thing to maybe look into.
Stores I would classify as retail slash medical.
I don't think we can put retail over in the industrial zone, can we?
I think so.
I don't know. Why not? I don't know.
Not sure. But I, I mean, the manufacturing part is, remind me again, if somebody makes like.
Tinctures or cookies or brownies or candies or gummies.
How about like, is there anything that's a little bit more like, less like recreational drug and more.
Oh, yeah. There is, there is. Well, that's the medical stuff.
Trying to.
I believe the medical, yeah, CBD, CBD.
That's allowed now, right?
Uh, but there's been a restriction on that, hasn't there?
There's a big thing going on right now. Camden National.
Restriction on that.
A hemp field. Pick, pick your own hemp field, people. In Whitefield, Camden National just pulled their loan.
Yes, yes.
Did a whole bunch and the, their.
But didn't the state put on a temporary CBD ban?
Insurance.
Yeah, but that got fixed, I think.
Okay.
Because hemp is federally legal.
Okay.
Yeah.
So did I hear you?
Just happened to. The Camden National Bank.
Did that? Yeah.
Jenna, I, I heard, I heard you say that you thought demolition delay and I heard Allison also suggested priority one on those.
Yeah.
But did you say on the retail slash whatever?
I think that would, would be a good priority high two.
Got it.
Yeah.
High two.
That's the only thing that, with that is that it's just gonna take so much time.
It does. It does.
Unless you words, unless you have some small subset.
That's why I'm keeping it in the high two subset, is that I think we have a lot of really.
You could come up with a specific thing, maybe that you think the community, like community would go for, but I don't know. That's a hard one.
It is a hard one.
I think products manufacturing and testing is easy. I think what's going to be the hard one is the retail stores.
I agree. I wholeheartedly agree.
You know, on top of this too, is the difference between caregivers and adult use. And so right, we don't allow, I mean, we allow cultivation on the adult use side. We don't right now. What I'd like to try to do is allow the same, if we allow something for adult use, we ought to allow it for medical. And so make that one and the same for the most part.
Retail slash medical.
That's a good point, a very good point.
Slash medical.
And so, but the retail stores is going to be the sticky one. I mean, that's, that's the one because where, how many are you going to allow?
Yeah.
And where? And how, what's the process? Is it, you know, a, you know, pool hat?
Be signage rules that go along with that.
From a perspective of getting as much input from townspeople as possible, kind of, you have to the November ballot, it's a presidential election. So you're going to get as many people voting as you're ever going to get in Camden. So.
So we had talked about that.
That's a very good point.
We may want to do that and maybe do that with the marijuana stuff.
That, I think that could be a set, a full, fully sold on November.
Let's do that.
Yeah, for that, no, not at all. I think that's a really great point.
That's great. Anything else?
Maybe demolition.
I think I would, maybe demolition delay out to November too, or is that what you were going to?
I don't know, I have to think about that because some of the, yeah.
We'll come back to it.
Houses could be knocked down between June and November though.
First.
Anyway.
First.
Construction season.
Thank you.
Ratner, it's your turn. You were 10 minutes late, you get 30 seconds.
Thank you very much.
I yield my time.
Real quickly, one of the things, I'm not expert on any of these. I'm not an expert on the zones and I don't want to be, you know, it's Jeremy's job. But what I would like to see is, I would like to see a list when we talk about these again with pro and con. Because you're in favor of a lot of this stuff, but I want to see a pro and con list about, this is why I think it should be, and this is what we should think about why maybe it shouldn't be considered, so that, you know, we're just not going along with the flow. I'd like to know more about that. So I'd like to see that.
Yeah, give you a background on it all and then pros and cons.
Yeah, so, so I know, because, so then, as we go through this, people watching, people listening will know more about it as well because it's not just about us and.
Great comment, Mark.
And so I'd like to see that. In terms of, so I'd like to know more about these things. The one I'm totally in favor of is accessory apartments. I think that's, that's an easy one. That's, that's a really important thing. The rest, I'm just not sure of yet because I don't know enough about them. I'm definitely in favor of putting marijuana on hold as I see things pop up all over the state and it looks sort of like fly by night kind of situations. What is it we just, our wife and I saw with the purple trailer in Rockland now.
That's true, Mark. I've seen that too.
I think that's in Thomiston though.
It isn't.
Thomiston, yeah, I mean, we're just seeing.
It's next to the Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah.
Be kidding for that type of years.
Thomiston allows anything in that particular area.
This is one lot.
Truck problem and retail marijuana all at once.
You're cutting it to Mark's 30 seconds.
I'm sorry.
I'm just, I'm just not in a hurry there. The one other thing I'd like to bring up and
These are mine.
It's, it's nothing we can go forward with here, but when we do our, finally do our select board priorities situations, I go back to the when the lodging association came to us and talked about what they would like to see and they talked about registrations, licensing, just to know what's going on. We haven't pursued that since Anita moved out and we have a whole bunch of new.
Talking about short-term rental?
Yeah, bed and breakfast orders, bed and breakfast owners, you know, they're so busy, you know, revising their housing and, and working hard that they haven't been a force anymore, but I still think it's important and I have some ideas about, I'd like to put forth about short-term housing, encouraging people to do long-term rentals that I think, but I think this is not the meaning for that, but that's what I want to bring up at the, at the next select board workshop where we're talking about our priorities.
I think that's a good point. I will say that it's not dead, you, this whole subject, I talked to people every couple of weeks about, are we going to start regulating them?
They just haven't been allowed immediately.
Correct. Do, are we going to license or register Airbnb? So that was our short-term rentals. It's interesting, one of the outfits that did, that regulates these like STR Helper and they ended up looking at Bar Harbor because Bar Harbor has an ordinance on the books similar to ours.
Right.
And they felt that their ordinance, they couldn't enforce, they couldn't administer, it was really challenging. So they had an entity look at how much of the housing stock in Bar Harbor is in short-term rentals and one-fifth of the housing in Bar Harbor is in short-term rentals. One-fifth. It's huge.
That's, that's going to be one of my main priorities.
Hundred and forty here.
Can't imagine we're that close, but.
I bet we.
And that, if we're up to the point of one-fifth at some point and we're wondering how we're going to, you know, facilitate housing in town, I mean.
If I had to spec, go on just anecdotal knowledge, the number of short-term rentals that I'm seeing come up right now are astronomical and they're all summer short-term rentals.
I think that number's going to go up and not down.
Astronomical, I've never seen so much housing available.
This is a huge topic across the country, I agree.
I'd like to put forward some ideas about encouraging people, maybe with, with tax relief or whatever, into doing long-term rentals. And that's something, but that's not the discussion today, so that's it for me.
It would be nice to bother the state.
Well, just in summary, I've heard, I want to ask you and Taylor also a question on, I've heard from at least a couple of the select board that industry industry zone and erosion sedimentation control should be deferred from priority for June. I heard that from two. Do you have any opinion, any of you have any opinion on that?
Well, I'd like to know more about it. And again, it's, like I said previously, I think we need more time because again, it sounded like it's one person that was interested in doing something. If, and as, as we're seeing in some of the times that people come before us, if we make a change and allow residential, it won't be long before the residential people will be coming in and saying, too many trucks and too much stuff and we need to think about.
What I'm getting and I think is where you're going is, is that we're going to push off the industry and the laws for, you know, I mean, completely.
A couple of expressions strong, and I'll shank by myself, about industrial zone and erosion sedimentation control. I believe I heard both, Allison.
But for totally different reasons, so I would, this one I just don't think we should do. The industrial, industrial zone changes, I just don't really think we should make and the shoreline stuff is, or the erosion control, it's like, maybe we can group that into some larger look later on, but still, good priority.
Yeah, that's, that's where I was going. So I'm, I would, what I'm hearing from the select board is that on priority one, industry zone, because I would agree. I think we start getting into this rat hole about commercial, residential, that one we should take off the priority one list. I think I'm hearing that from the select board. Two, I think the, on the priority one, erosion and sedimentation control should have a broader, bigger topic and we should address it as, as we discussed. And we can discuss what that title is, because I would agree. I think this is, this is a mega issue and I think it's a very important one.
Well, I think the, the issues that Allison and Jenna brought up about shoreline zoning and water plant uses, I mean, that kind of came out of that erosion control and I see them as two completely separate things, but if you want to, we can just roll them into something and have a bigger conversation about it down the road, that's fine.
They are, I hijacked a tiny bit. Jeremy's right that you could, there is a good argument to be made that they can be looked at entirely separately, but there is stuff in our shoreline because there's, I don't want to eliminate some of the stuff in our shoreline.
Oh, gosh, no, yeah, no, we wouldn't do that.
We might buy, so.
Jeremy, what I think we should do then is, from a hearing, is keep erosion and sedimentation control on priority one, but in priority two, we would put in at the top of the list, the shoreline zoning portion.
Yeah, that's kind of, I mean, I got to sit down and really kind of understand where Allison's, you're coming from on this to really fully understand everything.
I just think that might take time and.
Would take time.
So the question is, do we want to put the erosion and sediment, does the select board want to feel we put the erosion sedimentation control piece of this on this priority one or not? And I'm hearing, I thought I heard two that said not.
I guess I'm just, I'm curious.
Not, but I was just, the background for why not wasn't, I didn't feel you had that quite right, but.
Yeah, that's sort of what I was.
Which, I guess it doesn't really matter.
What are the, what would make it a priority? Like what specific issues are we running into that we feel are either outdated or were overlooked or?
I think our ordinance is outdated. It's in the performance standard. It's, so it's not, it's not the section that I was looking to amend was not in the shoreline zoning ordinance section of our performance standards, but it's actually in our general environmental performance standards generally. We have a piece on erosion control and I think it's dated. What I was trying to do is match it up with state law.
Does that, and is the, okay. I guess what's the, what's the net positive of doing that in your mind?
It would have been easier to control things like the middle school, but.
Yeah, more promptly. More promptly. I mean, we could today, if someone has exposed soil today, we would have to wait to try to get, unless there was actual impact happening to, to the resource, we would have to wait to deal with it and then we'd have to get the state involved potentially to get them to put erosion control up. What I'd rather be able to do is say, before you move dirt or earth or exposed soil in Camden, you've got erosion control up in place before that there's ever any rain coming down and any possible impact.
That goes into a new ordinance that gives us that enforcement.
Our shoreline zoning ordinance already says that.
Right, but for my, I understand that, but like if you're on Pearl Street and you're doing work on your project and your house and you're, and you've got a storm, storm drain in front of your house, all of a sudden you can have silt running into the storm drain and then that storm drain and that house is thousands of feet away from the resource, but actually the impact is pretty significant because it can go from a storm drain right into the harbor.
Piece of it need to be connected with a shoreline zoning discussion or is that what you're saying?
What's happening?
Does that piece of that you just described connect with the shoreline zoning conversation or are they completely separate the way that you're looking at it?
I think they're completely separate, but they, they do.
They do have an interconnection. So just my final thought, I mean, that's the clarification that I was kind of looking for, but with those examples, it feels like a bit of a priority if we don't have the ability to really rein in an issue in a timely manner.
It would be a lot cleaner and a lot more simpler and more up, more current with today's world and practices if we had that ability, but.
So then.
What kind of the ordinance would that go into?
It's in Article 10, Performance Standards Generally, as I recall. Yeah, so part two, it's Article 10, Part Two, Performance Standards Generally, Section One, Environmental, Soil and Earth Moving.
Right. We can modify.
I just think there is, that there's already stuff, but if.
We can modify any of these as we go forward, but what I'm hearing from the consensus is at least that industry zone off the priority one list. I'm hearing, and because I would agree, I think erosion sedimentation control is extremely important to control in any entity and I don't think it's being controlled very well here on construction projects at all. I would keep it on the list. We can always revisit for the bigger issue in that part of it. Then, what I'm also, I think I heard was, well, I didn't hear, I heard marijuana, which would be retail medical, would be worked on, but we probably looking at November.
Yeah, that seems like, that sounds, makes the most sense. Yeah.
And then I think, again, I heard at least a couple of us talk about taking demolition delay and moving it to priority one. Any consensus there, Mark or Taylor?
I don't know a ton about it, but I mean, I hear Allison and Jenna's passion and if it's been tried a number of times, I think it makes sense to thread it down.
The only reason that it keeps getting held up is because of sort of differences in opinion about what could pass or what couldn't pass or even some like hesitation on the actual, on the historic resources committee too, like should we be bold? Should we be not so bold? And so at this point, it just makes sense for some, that the planning board and Jeremy to just choose something, do something.
All right, so let's, let's, industry zone will be eliminated, demolition zone, we're recommending to go to priority one. And then we'll have one of the priority twos go into November and then the harbor morgue stays on and we are adding not necessarily as an ordinance, but we're adding the priority for a comprehensive plan update for the June ballot. Heard?
I think that's.
What'd you say about inland harbor? I didn't hear.
It's still priority two list.
Stays there, okay.
Basically, I mean, no, you don't, we can eliminate, not eliminating priority two marijuana, just go in November. And, and I know the morgues will, will keep on the list as a priority two because we, hopefully we can get to it. I think, but for example, though, I hear the erosion sedimentation control, I would totally agree is a large topic as it comes to shoreline, especially those of us that live along the shoreline here. And that's a good thing because it'll breed discussion on the rest of it and that may breed more work also. So that's, that's how these things morph into something bigger than we think. And that's good, that's a good thing. So what that said, if that's clear, that will be the prioritization for June ballot and slash November. Right?
Yeah. I also think we should be looking for opportunities to just, oh, shoot, I forgot to say, I can't believe I forgot to say this, the noise ordinance. Oh. I have it all written down and everything. I am really concerned that, and I've heard this from a lot of people, that we've inadvertently helped to kind of kill the live music scene and the late night scene in Camden with the noise ordinance because we don't have any kind of different standards for different zones. We don't have any different standards for, between businesses and just, you know, the, the difference between having a business that often has live music and then just having a party at your house. It's all the same standard and maybe there's a way to, it seems like it would be appropriate to change it by zone or allow instead of just a special amusement, instead of, make it part of the special amusement permitting process that by virtue of having you know, that license or permit or whatever it is, you have more privileges, but as it stands now, we've, we've made it so that after 11 in Camden, it's basically you have to whisper. We've effectively banned live music in Camden after 11 without a special, unless it's a special event that you've gotten permission from the select board for, and I don't believe that that was ever our intention.
I can say I was very much a part of when that was crafted. I was part of the select board when that came in and I spent a lot of time working with the people that crafted it. And there was, they'd been working on it for years and they finally put through a special committee of, I think it was.
Yeah, I mean, I remember watching.
Dennis, somebody else, and it was really difficult and working with Randy, difficult to come up with something and it was far and away the best, easiest solution to come up with and then going after it for years. Changing it, again, I'm worried about other, is there one or two places, maybe they get special exception things, you know, or permits for specific stuff, but you know, I, I've never seen Camden as a late night town anyway.
It used to be.
It used to be.
It'll be dead.
Ten years ago.
So I just.
Even ten years, yeah, even ten years ago.
Really reluctant to, to change it without real good reason, simply because I know how hard it was to craft and come up with something that worked for, you know, the police department and for the majority of the people. So that's just my, that's my, just having had to deal with the the frustrations of trying to get something done.
And I just read, just to, I just read a bunch of that, you know, everything that transpired with that and the ordinance and, I mean, the ordinance honestly seems pretty permissive. Just throwing that out there, compared to a lot of other noise ordinances around the state, around the country, it seems pretty permissive.
That was part of it. They looked at.
And it allows everything that you're hoping to have.
Anything after 11.
Over 65 dozen.
Taylor, did you have a comment?
I mean, people that want to play guitar on the village, I mean, anywhere after 11 can't even do that. They get, it's, it's definitely had an impact.
Yeah, I mean, in general, I definitely agree with, with Allison. I think the, the reason I'm pausing a little bit is when we talked about this, I don't know, last month, a couple of months ago at our board meeting, when we're discussing a specific business being relicensed and there was quite a bit of discussion around noise ordinance and too much noise. I guess the reason I'm, I'm not quite sure what the solution is because I think we have to walk a fine line. My recollection from those discussions was that that business wasn't, hadn't actually violated anything and, but the police had been there multiple times and there have been multiple complaints. So my, my interpretation of that was that to avoid the hassle of consistently having to come here every year and fight with the neighbors over noise ordinances and have the police come all the time, even though a call may have come in for a noise complaint, they may not necessarily have been violating something. The person who called just didn't think that it was appropriate or whatever. So I guess my, you know, if we remove the ordinance or change it or I wonder if that problem still exists.
I think, remember when we discussed that, we found that the, the business was totally fine in what they were doing. And, you know, that was a situation where, you know, a specific person, a specific complaint because of where they lived and.
It's not just about this for me at all. It really isn't.
But I think that the, the, the ordinance worked in that situation because it wasn't, it's, it allowed some stuff and it didn't, you know, when you're inside a building, it's, we're outside, it's a problem, you know, we're a small town and there are a lot of closed quarters.
Jenna, can I just finish my thought? Yeah.
Sure, sure.
So that was, that's just a concern that I have in my mind, like, is there, do we actually, or what do we solve by doing that? My gut feels like making a change based on district makes a lot of sense. I think that, that there should be very little, if no, ordinance like that in the immediate downtown area. And I think if anything, we should be doing more to, to encourage more nightlife and this is how I feel.
And you're always going to run into the situation where that downtown district abuts the village.
And that's what I mean by a fine line. It's always, we're going to be walking a tightrope no matter what.
Yep.
It's threading that needle in a way that makes sense for everybody, so.
Well, I don't, I mean, since there appears to be three of you that are coming from that perspective or at least wanting to look at it, what if, what if?
Oh, no, I think it should be more prohibitive. No, just kidding. Sorry, that probably wasn't well timed. I agree with what, pretty much exactly what Taylor said. I think we should have an arts district type thing in town where, I mean, or whatever. That's just sort of in my head, what I've been thinking. A district that invites live music, that invites these kinds of things to take place. I don't think that the noise ordinance, I think the noise ordinance is a good thing in other parts of town and a very helpful thing. I would be pretty unhappy if my neighbors were. I would be pretty unhappy if my neighbors were, you know, shooting on fireworks all night and allowed to do that. But I think having something in the immediate downtown, in my, my feeling is identical to Taylor's, that it is a good thing.
Yeah, I guess for what I was going, was it, it seems three out of two, I think, appear to be.
Three out of two.
Or three out of five.
Yeah, wins.
We're duplicating, Jeremy, watch out.